I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 15th meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At this time, if you'll please stand, we have Reverend Scott Fennecum is going to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Lord Creator and Sustainer of all things, we meet this evening to serve the people of this county, and as our custom, we ask a blessing upon our endeavors. Guard our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. And we thank you for being our source of guidance this day and in all the days to come. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Item one is approval of agenda. I have no additions or deletions. Does anyone else have a motion for approval? Second, any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item two is public comment. I have no one signed up tonight for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to an item? Hearing none, I'll close public comment and move to item three. We have a presentation from Almaral Hospital. We have Mr. Dan Drake and...
Lena Hodeck.
Yeah. And we'll let you all introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what you do. I serve on the Almaral Hospital Board, and I asked them to put this presentation together as some impressive statistics they're going to share with us tonight about our local hospital. And with that, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I am Lena Hodeck, and I am the Chief Quality Officer with Almaral Health, Almaral Hospital out in Elizabeth City. And with me this evening, I have Dan Drake. He's our Vice President of Patient Care Services.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us this evening. A big thank you to Currituck County. We appreciate this opportunity to share some great results in the quality arena from our hospital, to share with you how there truly is extraordinary care being delivered right in our own backyard. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and get started by sharing with you the House of Almaral Health. And what you see here is kind of our strategic framework, if you will. And we sit on a foundation, that's our values, of integrity, compassion, and innovation. Healthcare is a constantly changing industry, and we have to remain agile. We have to make sure that we have that integrity, that we do what we say we're going to do for the right reasons. And you can't truly be in healthcare without having compassion. Resting on that foundation, that's our values, is our pillars of operational excellence. And as you can see, there first, we can't have high quality of care without having the right people in our organization. So people, quality, community service, and finance. And if we do those things right, it leads to growth. Those pillars are the foundational pieces or the structure that holds up our roof of the house, which help us or enables us to live our mission, which is to provide high quality healthcare services to the people we have the privilege to serve. And then ultimately to reach our vision, which is to be the health provider of choice in northeastern North Carolina, by providing high quality care for every patient, every day, every encounter. Now, you might say, that's a nice framework, and in the background, you can see that we want it to be a safe haven for patients and for their families that come within our care. All of those things are nice. And about a year ago, when I joined Almaral Hospital, I had a question for our staff, and I said, what gets you up in the morning? What makes you excited to come to work each and every day? And the words we kept hearing over and over again was the word "community," to create a healthier community, and how we had to work together to make that happen. So you kind of see that shooting star up there. What we are shooting for is to create a healthier community together. And at the end of that rainbow, you know, our goal will be that Walmart up in Elizabeth City could stop selling alarm clocks that has a buzzer on it, because when that alarm clock goes off, we go, woo, can't wait to get in my car and go to the hospital, because it is truly an extraordinary place. So that's the framework that we have built, that we are working very hard on, that really simplifies, and looking at that describes our culture. Back in March of 2008, through a website, hospitalcompare.hhs.gov, they started reporting out quality results from the patient's perspective from hospitals across the nation. Today, in order for hospitals to receive annual payment update for Medicare/Medicaid from the Centers for Medicare/Medicaid Services, we have to participate in what is called the HCAP survey, or the Hospital Consumer Assessment of Healthcare Providers and Systems. And it's a survey, like I said, it's used by hospitals across the country. We have an external survey vendor that is picking up the phone and calling patients every single week that has had an experience at Almaral Hospital. About, I would say about a month and a half ago, on the cover of the Virginia Pilot, there was an article talking about how patients in the Tidewater area were rating hospitals using this survey. So our Chief Executive Officer and President of Almaral Hospital called me into her office, and she said, Lena, how do we compare to the hospitals up in Hampton Roads area? Because truly, what we have found is when patients don't come to Almaral Hospital, they drive by us going up 17 or 168, typically up to the Centerra Hospitals. So I want to share with you the highlights of the results of that patient experience survey, because truly, the voice of the patient is, don't hurt me, which is patient safety, heal me, which is quality of care, and while you're at it, be nice to me. And that is the service component. And we know that for, for an individual that doesn't have a whole lot of experience, or doesn't know all the medical terminology, or have the knowledge, even for people that are well-educated, it's hard to understand and navigate the healthcare system. So truly, when we're talking about quality, the patient's experience while they're in our care is just as important as the heal me and the don't hurt me concept. So, the first dimension on the survey talks about nurse communication. And as you see here on the screen, the national average is a red bar. All of those light blue colors are the 12 hospitals in the Hampton Roads area. The teal or green bar is how we perform, that's Almaral Hospital. And the yellow bar is your hospital here in your own backyard being better than us. It is our most recent data from the third quarter of the fiscal year that just closed. So, the patients are asked, if they had an overnight stay in the hospital, did the nurses treat you with courtesy and respect? Did they listen to you? And did they speak plain English? In other words, did they explain things in a way that you could understand? And this shows the percent of patients surveyed who said that that always happened while they were in the hospital. So you can see here that we had 78% of patients saying that always happened compared to the national average of 75%. We were the only hospital in the area performing above the national benchmark. The patients are also asked the same question in terms of care from physicians. Were they treated, treated you with courtesy and respect? Did they listen to you? And did they explain things in a way you could understand? And here again, you can see that Almaral Hospital, we had 85% of our patients saying that always happened while they were in our hospital, compared to 80%, which is the national benchmark. And the only hospital in the Tidewater area that scored above the national benchmark was Bonsacur Maryview Medical Center for this particular dimension. The survey also asks about responsiveness. It's important when you're in the hospital, oftentimes your lifeline, so to speak, is that call bell that you have on your bed. If you need something, you feel a sense of loss of control, and that is the one thing you can control, is that call bell. So this asks patients that, when you needed help, how often did someone come to help you as soon as you needed it? And this shows the percent of always. And again, history repeating, Almaral Hospital is the only hospital that performed above the national benchmark. And again, in our April to June quarter, and that continued into our July through September quarter, we kept seeing improvements. We're now at 71% of patients saying that always happened. How we've been able to do that, and one of the things that our nursing staff has done a brilliant job at is, we did a call light study to figure out, why do most patients use the call light? What are they calling for? And what we found out, it was comfort items and pain medications. They were in pain. So we instituted a way where nurses are now more proactively providing patients with what they need upfront. So they round on patients every hour, and before they leave the room, they look at pain, they look at making sure everything is within my reach as a patient, and then they go on to say, is there anything else I can do for you while I'm here? I have the time. So really more proactive in anticipating the needs of our patients. Cleanliness is another area, and I am pleased to share with Currituck County that Almaral Hospital is in the top 5% of hospitals nationwide in terms of cleanliness. And that's from the patient's perspective. And the question asked here is, how often were the bathroom and room kept clean while you were in the hospital? And we have 81% of our patients saying that that always happened compared to the national benchmark of 70%. And again, we're the only hospital when compared to the 12 hospitals in the Tidewater area that can show this kind of a result. Whether or not it's quiet at night, unfortunately, when you're in a hospital, it's not going to be as quiet as when you are at home. We are a 24-hour patient care, doesn't stop after 10 o'clock at night, so there will be some additional noise, and the lights have to be on and so forth. And I hate to see that the national benchmark, there is 57% of patients say that it was quiet at night. And when you look at Almaral Hospital, we were 65% in the most recent quarter, we even were better than us. And the only hospital, again, when compared to Tidewater Area Hospital, that performed above the national benchmark. And what we've done here is, in addition to making sure that our carts are not, you know, making squeaky noises, and we don't slam doors and talk loud, we've also explained to our patients what to expect of a hospital stay when we orient them upon admission. Pain control is a big one. We know this is important to our patients, and like I mentioned, we do pain assessments every hour in our hospital. And I think that is very much contributing to us, again, being the only hospital that is above the national benchmark in terms of how often we help control the patient's pain, and whether or not we were concerned to help the patient manage their pain. Communication about medications. When you're in the hospital, it's important to know, what are these new meds I'm getting? And when I'm going home, what are these medications? What's the side effects? And this shows whether or not we did a good job communicating with our patients and making sure they understood their meds and the side effects. And again, you can see here that Almaral Hospital was, again, the only hospital above the national benchmark. And again, we outperformed ourselves for the most recent quarter. Now discharge information was an area that we were really struggling with. As you can see, for the time period of October of 2008 all the way to September 2009, we were in the bottom five when we compared ourselves to Tidewater Area Hospitals. And we knew this was an opportunity. We worked really hard on it, trying to start working on the discharge date already when the patient was admitted. We have moved to a model called team teaching, where nurses and special educators such as diabetes and heart failure work together to teach a small concept to the patient every day. So by the time discharge comes around, the patient is truly prepared to go home. That has also had a nice ripple effect in our emergency department. The national average is 2% of patients leaving emergency departments without being seen, and our current is 1.8%. We've also, through system throughput and making process improvements, been able to reduce the average length of stay in our emergency department by 20 minutes compared to last fiscal year, and we are now well below the national benchmark of 240 minutes. So that has also been quite a success story for us and our patients. So lastly, our patients are asked, overall, how would you rate the hospital? And the scale that they're being provided during the interview is zero, which is the worst possible hospital, up to nine and 10, which is considered the best possible hospital. How would you rate it? And this shows the percent of patients who said, I would say it was the best possible hospital. And you can see that Almaral Hospital were 67% for that timeframe. Now, the most recent quarter, we moved up to 74%. And the only hospital that outperformed us was Centerra General Norfolk. And what you typically find across the country is that the larger tertiary care facilities have a much higher percentage of the best possible, being seen as the best possible hospital. And the reasons can be numerous, but what research has shown us is, Almaral Hospital doesn't do open-heart surgery. So in order for me to say it's the best possible hospital, I would think, well, they should have more services available. Centerra Norfolk have more of that. So it's more of a perception, this has been linked to the image that's out there in the community. But as you can tell, we're making improvements. And I was so pleased of Dan and his team in Patient Care Services to share with him that thus far, for the month of October, for interviews completed, our rate had gone up to 77% of patients saying it was the best possible hospital, based on their experience. And then, of course, we ask, would you recommend us to your family and your friends? And this shows the percent of patients who said, I would definitely recommend this hospital to my family and my friends. And as you can see here, Chesapeake General and Centerra Norfolk scored higher than us for that timeframe. We were above the national benchmark. And then the most recent quarter, we outperformed ourselves, and we are on par with Norfolk, Centerra General. So we're very proud of this result. Now, we know the willingness to recommend is, again, a reflection of our image, our reputation out in the community. So, we know what our patients are telling us, and you might say, well, that's all and good, Lena and Dan, but what about the clinical quality? And we have a measure referred to as optimal care or core measures that's also publicly reported on the website, hospitalcompare.hhs.gov. And basically, we look at four patient types. Patients coming in with heart attack, patients coming in that have congestive heart failure, pneumonia patients, and our surgical patients. And just to give you an example, let's say four patients come into our ER this month presenting with heart attack. The standard of care is that those patients receive an aspirin upon arrival within 30 minutes, right? Let's say one of those four patients got the aspirin after 31 minutes. They fell out. So that means we got three out of four right. Although we provided all the other elements of care perfect for that patient, we missed one thing. We were one minute over the allotted time for the aspirin administration. So that means our optimal care was 75%. So I want to share with you the optimal care for each of these patient populations. This is our clinical quality and how that compares to the national benchmark. And you can see that for our surgical patients, 94% of patients receive all the elements of care for which they were eligible. 93% for our pneumonia patients, 90% for congestive heart failure, and 94%, I'm sorry, 93% for those coming in presenting with heart attack. And that, while we were just a little bit below the national average there, we had one patient who got aspirin at 31 minutes versus 30. So the, the rules there are pretty strict. So again, I would like to thank you for letting us present these high-quality results, and truly, an extraordinary hospital where you can receive care close to home. And we make it a big, big point, both from behalf of the leadership team and also our staff, to listen to the voice of those we serve, our patients and their families. And that is, don't hurt me, heal me, and be nice to me, in that order. At this time, are there any questions in terms of the quality results from Almaral Hospital?
Anyone have any questions? Yes, sir.
Do you share this data with the doctors that are not on staff that are, that have hospital privileges as well?
We have made it a point, we started about six months ago, to publish these results in our physician newsletter that goes out to our entire medical staff, which includes not just active, but also those that have privileges.
And it's disseminated, I'm sure, to all the staff people in the hospital.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We have a report called "The Voice of the Patient" that goes out every single month. Leadership team gets it more frequently. We get it every single week, every Friday around noon. And then in addition to management team meetings, we look at safety, we look at quality of care, and we look at the patient family experience. So we are constantly looking for improvement opportunities. But we have made just such phenomenal progress over the past 12 months.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I would like to say, I believe Owen, you were on the board when they hired Ms. Tanner, the administrator. She came in, she's done an excellent job, and then she's hired excellent people that are doing excellent work. And every one of the meetings we have every month, there's a report on every one of those things she's talking about. We have committees that are doing those different things, and they just do an outstanding job for our little neighborhood hospital. When, when she presented this to us, I thought it was important that the general public know that you can get good care right here in the neighborhood. And a few years ago, that wasn't maybe the case, but it is now, and Almaral Hospital's under the university health system now. And it's, it's a good place to go now, if you have to go. It's not something you want to go.
Nice place to visit, but I wouldn't want to live there.
It is an extraordinary place to visit should you need healthcare services. And I want to finish by just sharing a brief story. I was at Food Lion the other night, and I had my badge still on, and a lady saw my badge, and she said, you work at the hospital? And I said, yes, I do. And she said, well, let me tell you about a story in your emergency department. And I go, oh, what is that? So she goes on to tell me about her son that had asthma. And she said, we was misdiagnosed. And she just goes on, and I had to interrupt her, and I said, ma'am, could you tell me when this was? Because I'm thinking, I'm going to be on the phone with our medical director in the emergency department once I get to my car. And she said, well, let me see, my son was five at the time, so about 13 years or so ago. But the passion with which she shared that experience, I thought it had happened yesterday. So I think those old stories, and you know how we all like the, the bad gossip, so to speak, it's really important for us and for our staff and for the patients we serve, that for you to know that there truly is good quality at Almaral Hospital.
Anything else? We thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is item four, public hearing in action on PB 10-28, Turnpike Properties. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, Zoning Districts, Chapter 6, Environmental Protection, and Chapter 8, Parking and Driveways, to modify the zoning requirements for single-family residential lots with centralized water and sewer service and a limited business district with hotels and a limited business with hotels zoning district. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment request for you tonight. It proposes to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to modify zoning standards for residential lots in oceanfront LBH zoning districts. The amendment includes reductions in lot size, lot width, driveway and parking space setbacks, parking space size, and the setback for fill. While the request modifies six sections of the UDO, it is narrowly tailored to oceanfront LBH zoning districts that are connected to centralized water and sewer. Essentially, the amendment results in development patterns that are typically allowed within planned unit developments. Planning staff does have concern with the policy implications of this request, particularly since the applicant's objectives can be accomplished without a text amendment through other means. That said, the amendment is narrow in scope and does minimize the countywide impact and basically applies to a single tract of land surrounded by the Pine Island Planned Unit Development known as the Audubon tract. And I want to clarify, staff has no objection to residential development on this subject property of the Audubon tract. However, staff is compelled and has recommended denial of this request due to the policy implications of it, which outlined in our staff report. The planning board heard this case at their October 12, 2010 meeting, during which the planning board recommended approval of the text amendment with the condition that the amendment be limited to LBH oceanfront zoning districts. Tonight's text amendment, or what's before you, does reflect that condition that was added by the planning board. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you.
Want to have any questions, Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have Mr. Eddie Valdiviso with Quabell and Associates. I guess you're going to do a presentation for us, or answer questions.
Answer Mr. Questions, uh, answer questions mainly, Mr. Chairman. But briefly for the record, my name is Eddie Valdiviso with Quabell and Associates, and I'm here at the podium representing several groups in a unified manner. Turnpike Properties, Saga Development, the contract purchasers for the Audubon parcel that we're primarily discussing, and also with the approval of the Pine Island Property Owners Association. In a nutshell, this is a very complicated project, as in development scenarios and different viewpoints from different perspectives of adjacent property owners, previous owners, sellers, and buyers. This is an issue that has been well-vetted and well-discussed among all the parties, including the county. Planning's position has been consistent and clear through the whole process. From one perspective, he's correct. There, there, there is a path to approval without a zoning text amendment. However, in the bigger scheme of things, and the, how do I describe this, is with all the parties that are involved and the coming together with the best solution possible for all parties involved, this is the method of doing that, and that's with the LBH zoning text amendment, which is pretty much narrowed down to, LBH, that's oceanfront, which is narrowed down to very few, if there's are any other pieces of property of this nature. And this is to accommodate a single-family residential development. And I'm here to answer any questions. I've got a lot of information. If you want some questions, we have principals from all of the stakeholders that are available. If you have any questions, I'm here to respond.
Well, the last time we all met here at the river, we spent about six hours going over this, and, and I know it was very controversial at that time, but it seems that everyone has come together, that they agree this is the solution. So I'm going to ask all three parties involved, are you in agreement that this is the solution for that piece of property? I believe we have someone from the Property Owners Association. Could you please state for the record your Property Owners Association's position on this?
I will. My name is Jack Cuse. I am the manager for the Pine Island Property Owners Association, have been for 14 years, and have attended the previous mentioned meetings. At this time, the, I can, yeah, association is in favor of the plan before you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a representative from the developer? Could you also speak to this?
Yes. I'm Alagupta, I represent the buyer group here, and yes, we agreed to this compromise, and we, we are in agreement with this plan.
I have one question for Mr. Goopt. I have one question for you.
Sure.
The residual piece of property, what is the intent and the plans and the future with that piece of property? The residual part?
Sure. The, the plan is to eventually have a master plan of 13 homes on the parcel. For the purpose of development and to phase the development of it, we are dividing into two, two phases. But the intent is to develop it as 13 residential lots.
So in other words, the 13 residential lots will take up the full amount of the property that's there?
That's correct.
The Audubon tract?
That's correct.
That's what we're saying, okay.
All right. And how about Pine Island? Can someone speak for Pine Island or Turnpike Properties?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Bill Holland with Turnpike Properties, and we do favor this. We are the petitioners in this matter, and we do favor it. I would, I would only add one thing. I would only add one thing to Mr. Idlet's question. There is some, there's still some, one open consideration that Audubon may want to retain a portion of the property for use, for access or something else. But then, from our perspective, the only development that will occur on that will be single-family residential development unless Audubon were to retain something else. But there'd be no development other than what we're proposing here. It may end up, I don't know how likely it is, it could end up at 12 lots instead of 13. But we believe it will be 13 single-family residential lots.
And if this is adopted, that resolves the ongoing or potential legal actions as well, correct?
Yes, sir. We have a legal action against the action that was taken to permit other uses of this property. And if we can proceed with this, that legal action would become moot, and it would be withdrawn.
So everyone's in agreement? Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve PB 10-28 due to its consistency with the 2006 land use plan, and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest and promotes orderly growth and development.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Motion carries. Item five, Consideration of Ordinance Exempting Currituck County from Permit Extension Act. I guess that would be you, Mr. McCree.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, in 2009, the General Assembly adopted legislation that stopped the tolling or the running of times for expiration of certain development permits. That included state and county or other local units of local government permits. So in our case, that would have, that includes building permits, special use permits, conditional use permits, any other type of development permits issued by the county. The consequence of that action was that there were a number of permits, several permits at least, that had expired as of, or prior to the enactment of that particular piece of legislation, which was effective, I believe it was June 30, 2009, and brought back to life. Some permits had actually been expired and dead for almost six months. And that was without any public notice or public input with regard to those particular type, those particular permits. Now, the 2009 legislation provided that the tolling or the running of permit expiration time would begin again effective January 1, 2011. This past summer, in the last session of the General Assembly, the General Assembly again acted to toll or prevent the running of the expiration of development permits, including on the county level, for an additional year, such that permits would not begin to run toward their expiration until the beginning of January 1, 2012. What the General Assembly also did, however, was to allow for units of local government to exempt themselves from that additional year period of time. We have spoken, of course, with the board in a work session regarding this particular issue and of concern to Currituck County, a lot of the fact that the county is in the process of rewriting its Unified Development Ordinance, and, which we expect to be effective and adopted by this board sometime in the early part of next year, particularly, probably the spring. The consequence, if this Permit Extension Act is allowed to occur in Currituck County, is that we may well end up with a number of non-conforming projects or developments and the prospect of having certain, certain properties being regulated under the old UDO, and then going forward with other properties in the county coming under the new UDO. And so it's staff recommendation that Currituck County adopt this particular ordinance and exempt itself from the additional year of the act. I would note that the General Assembly only required that this be adopted by resolution of the board, and no public hearing was required. However, in abundance of caution and an opportunity for the public to weigh in or have some input, this was advertised for a public hearing, and it is also presented to you in the form of an ordinance, which is typical of land use regulation as opposed to a resolution. And so having now explained what the matter is, I would tender this back to you, Mr. Chairman, and suggest that you open the public hearing for public comment.
At this time, I will open the public hearing. I had no one signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this issue that did not sign up? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask the staff, the board if they have any questions to Mr. McCree. Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion. Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any further consideration? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is Consideration of Resolution Requesting State Board of Transportation Abandonment of a Portion of an Open Cul-de-sac on Walnut Island Boulevard. Mr. McCree?
I can certainly present that by way of background information. Section 136-36 of the General Statutes authorizes a Board of Commissioners upon its own motion or petition from a citizen to close or abandon any portion of the state secondary road system. In this particular instance, what is proposed to you tonight is a resolution in which you would request that the State Board of Transportation abandon a certain platted portion of what is known as Walnut Island Boulevard or Secondary Road 1186. You have before you a map showing the area highlighted in red that would be proposed to be recommended to the state for removal from the secondary road system. As you can see, from the State Department of Transportation engineering personnel, this portion of Walnut Island Boulevard, which was platted back in the early 1970s, has never actually been opened, improved, or utilized by the state. We understand further from the State Department of Transportation that its intent was originally designed in order to allow for school buses to be able to turn around, which of course is not the case as we understand it today. But you also will notice that, in any event, there was, there was no, I guess I'll say dead end at this end of Walnut Island Boulevard, as appeared on the original plat that went to record. As you can see, Walnut Island Boulevard extends on into connecting with Inlet Lane and intersecting with Moat Drive. And so this, this again is now being presented to you for your consideration to request that the State Board of Transportation abandon this particular unused and unopened portion of Secondary Road 1186.
Mr. McCree, when I look at this map, it looks like there's actually a residence.
It does appear from, from our aerial GIS, that there's actually a residential structure that is located in what is currently believed to be included within the state secondary road system.
So this would take care of that issue and just abandon the cul-de-sac?
It should. Again, it should have no effect as set forth in the resolution of motor vehicles, traffic, and free movement of persons within that area of Walnut Island.
Okay. Now, this also is for a public hearing?
No, it does not require a public hearing.
Okay.
So in other words, this residence would not have to move? I guess that's the question I would have.
Well, I mean, I would suggest that it would not be subject to being moved should the state ever make a determination that this portion of Walnut Island Boulevard be open sometime in the future.
But it takes care of, they would not have to, you don't have this on the machine, do you? But it solves that problem of that residence. All right?
Is anybody living in the residence?
I think so.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask to be recused because my property is involved in this.
Okay, we have a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? We've already got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign?
No.
One, no. Motion carries. Item seven is Consent Agenda.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item eight, Commissioners Report. Ms. Taylor?
Just real quick, because I will be back at the December 6 meeting, but I just wanted to congratulate Butch Petry and Mr. Paul Martin, and especially Ms. Marion Gilbert for the past election, and wish them all the luck working with you fellas for the next four years.
You didn't mention patience.
Thank you much. Mr. Nelms?
Yes, sir. I'll save my remarks for the next meeting. Mr. Scanlon, I'd like to let you know, so that you can let travel and tourism know and let the people know that Saturday and today were two of the best duck hunting days we've ever had at the south end of the county. We've got some people staying at Walnut Island that limited out both days. They're from Almarl, North Carolina, from the western part, and they're very, very happy about that. And I know that in our particular neighborhood, we've got about 30-some duck and goose hunting guides who are unemployed like everybody else. And if travel and tourism in the county could get the word out, my lovely wife took some pictures today of all the ducks and geese, and we watched my dog refetch them in the sounds. So, but I think it's, it's, it's that time of the year where we can get a little stimulus into the economy, particularly in our tradition. And hopefully, the ducks will come down there. Mr. Idlet said he heard the word all the way over to Knott's Island about, they were down there, and they were, there was a good variety of ducks, gadwolves, teal. We had some mallards and snow geese. And the hunters said that one of them's been coming about 12 years. And he said this was the best hunt he'd ever had Friday, Saturday, and today. Just get the word out and take advantage of our travel and tourism.
Might as well get me a license this year.
Get you a license this year.
It won't stay long. Don't worry about it.
Mr. Rohr?
I just wanted to make one comment about something really wonderful happening in Currituck, I believe, anyway. This past Saturday, Mr. Woody, Mr. McCree, and myself, and also Mr. Petry and Ms. Gilbert attended a meeting of the Walnut Island Property Owners Association. Excellent turnout. There's been some real positive things happening there because of their community improvement days. They have a community pride day, which I think is going to be an annual event or probably more often. I noticed some representatives from the Property Owners Association in the audience here tonight. But I just wanted to commend them. I think they're doing a wonderful job. It's great to see a community come together, get out and work like this to clean things up and make it a better community, much like the folks from Almarl Health we're talking about. And I just think we ought to applaud their efforts and encourage others to follow suit.
Mr. Idlet?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Etheridge?
Very briefly. Last Friday night, I was over in Corrala and was at a restaurant eating dinner and met two couples. One had a home in Pine Island, and the other had just purchased a home that day in Buck Island. So I say, "Kaching, yippee." But both of these individual families remarked about the courtesy in which everybody they had dealt with, with the county, had extended to them and how the realtors had been so nice to them. The gentleman and lady that had just bought their house said that they had looked all up and down Derek County, all up and down the east coast of the United States. And this was by far the best place that they had found and had the friendliest, nicest people. And they were proud to buy a home in Currituck County.
That's good. Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just reflect on the Property Owners Association of Walnut Island. I went over there a couple of weeks ago and rode around with them, took a tour, and they have done a marvelous job over there trying to clean up. And I know there is some situations over there that the county will probably be able to help them with down the road, and just need to do what we can for them, because they are certainly trying to make their place presentable.
I have a couple of things. I want, I want to go visit Kama and the docks that were torn up during the storms. It's my understanding, when I left here that night, that we were not going to charge permit fees for people rebuilding their docks. Am I the only one that had that understanding?
That's what we said.
Because I have talked to people who said the county did charge them permit fees to rebuild their docks and their piers. Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of anybody specific, but it was not my understanding. I know we talked about disposals and tipping fees. I didn't know if you wanted to waive permits. But if they would just contact us, if that's the board's wishes, we certainly will refund that to them.
Okay, because I do know of one, one or two examples where one of our inspectors got a call, got a little, little thing going on between two neighbors and said they were rebuilding their pier without a permit. Inspector called them and made them come in here and pay $50 for the permit and then a $25 fine. And I'll have those people contact you. And then the other issue I want to discuss is there was an article in the Daily Advance yesterday about signs. And I think we all agree the county needs to clean up signs and have some reputable, nice signs or whatever. But I have been contacted by some small businesses, some typical, you know, mom and pop businesses, and they feel like imposing a ordinance equal to what you impose on Food Line and Walmart is missing the mark a little bit. And a lot of these, these small convenience stores or whatever depend on, the Pepsi-Cola man brings a corrugated sign, and he put 99 cent Pepsis out there, and he puts it out, and it makes people stop. Or his cigarettes, "I don't smoke, but some people do. If they want to, it's fine with me." But they advertise them, and under the new sign ordinance, I don't think they're going to, I don't think the current one really allows it much. And under the new one, it's going to absolutely prohibit some of that. And I talked with Mr. Woody today, and he understood where I'm coming from. And I think the board really needs to have a work session to discuss some of those issues. You just can't treat a convenience store like you treat a big box store when it comes to signage and that type of stuff. There's got to be some allowances that, I'm talking professional, I'm not talking about hand-painted ones or whatever, but there has to be some allowances for that. So I don't know if any of y'all got any phone calls, but I sure did. And I've asked Mr. Woody for a work session on that. So I'm saying that for the general public, so that they'll know that, what they read, that the commissioners are looking into that.
Do we need to take action regarding the permit fees for Mr. Scanlon's benefit, he said, with the boards?
Would you, yes.
The board, the board took a policy that doesn't expire until next year on if they bought materials and used local contractors, that they would be refunded 100% of it. We took action on that, and that, that policy is still in effect, I thought, until next year.
On building permits.
On building permits. Which, which would be the bulkhead permit too. That would be a building permit.
I mean, that, that policy's still in place, yes.
Yes, sir.
Will that, will that take care of it then?
It should.
Well, only if they use local labor and local materials. If they didn't, then they would not fund that policy.
Let's just get specific.
To be safe, you might want to just go ahead and just...
Let's get specific about the rebuild of the piers and the bulkheads, and somebody just put it in a motion and...
I make a motion that we exempt the rebuilding of piers, bulkheads that were damaged by the recent storm. Probably permit fees.
I have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Yes, sir.
Have we been able to schedule the vendors meeting that requested several weeks ago about, I don't know, we had, everything for...
Yes, that's being scheduled. It's actually going to be two meetings. I believe the first one is going to be internally, and I think that's November 30. And the other one, I think, is December 6, I think.
7th or 8th.
Okay, but Peter Bishop will be, is in the process of advertising those, but the dates have been set up. He's worked with some state and federal representatives to bring in some other folks to, to participate in that. But that has been set up.
All right. Mr. Scanlon, you have anything to report?
Yes, sir.
Ask for a motion to recess the Currituck County Board of Commissioners and to reconvene as the Tourism Development Authority.
So move.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Scanlon, I believe it's a budget amendment.
You have three budget amendments in your package, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on them.
Does anyone have any questions? I'm trying to get to them, Mr. Scanlon. I forgot what one of them was.
Sideboard, it looks like.
You've got, there's one to renew, not renew a lease, but to lease a copy machine in the funds associated with that.
Yeah.
When we were meeting several months ago on the Wild Horse Tours, you heard a report from Parks and Recreation about the amount of uses of paper products at the Carova Beach. So you got a budget request to address that, as well as to convert from paper towels into an electric hand blower in that facility to try to overcome some of the costs they're having. But those are the ones you have in your package. They're very into your agenda. having. Were those the ones you have in your package? They're very into your agenda.
Yes, I got them. Does anyone need a motion? Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn as the Tourism Advisory Board and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners?
Move to adjourn.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn this meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners?
So move.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.